At this time, I'd like to call meeting to order. And this is the first item of business time I've been able to observe a moment of silence for a senior in elementary school. You can come ahead. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Lauren Smith of Rockdale County Magnet School for our inspiration.
Thank you. And thank you for the introduction. The following poem has at its core the themes of friendship and sympathy for others. It's the paradox of human life that teaches us, the more you hoard onto love and happiness, the more you lose it. But when you share it with others, the more you obtain. In this case, the more you share, the more you possess. Unfortunately, it's also a part of human nature to want to take things and point out the weaknesses and flaws in others. But the best way to overcome this is through a kind and patient understanding. "The House by the Side of the Road" by Sam Walter Foss. Let me live in a house by the side of the road where the race of men go by. The men who are good, the men who are bad, as good and bad as I. I would not sit in the squander seat or hurl the cynic's band. Let me live in a house by the side of the road and be a friend to man. The men who press with the odor of hope, the men who are faint with the strife. But I turn not away from their smile nor their tears, both parts of an infinite plan. Let me live in my house by the side of the road and be a friend to man. I know there are brook-laden meadows ahead and mountains of wearisome height. And the road passes on through the long afternoon and stretches away to the right. But still I rejoice from the travelers' joys and weep with the strangers' moan. Nor live in my house by the side of the road like a man who dwells alone. Let me live in my house by the side of the road where the race of men go by. They are good, they are bad, they are weak, they are strong, wise, foolish, as am I. Then why should I sit in the squander seat or hurl the cynic's band? Let me live in my house by the side of the road and be a friend to man. Thank you.
I just wanted to say something. My skin crawled when you said that poem here, why? I was born in nineteen twenty-nine. I went to the first grade in Fairbent, Georgia, I guess about thirty-five, thirty-six. And I've got thousands of books and I read everything when I was an awful student. But when I was in the first grade, they taught poems. And I said that poem in the first grade. And I'm glad to hear it's still around.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. At this time, I'd like for us to stand for the quid pro quo.
This is the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next item is to adopt the agenda.
Take a motion to adopt the agenda?
Sergeant.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven-four and unopposed. Next item is school presentation. I'd like to call Ms. Kay Simons, Principal of Honey Creek Elementary.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent of Board Members. This is my first experience at this, so have patience with me. I'm Kay Simons, I'm the new principal of Honey Creek Elementary. And it is my honor and pleasure to be here to give you a little demonstration of what's going on at Honey Creek. We have developed or implemented the STEM initiative at our school this year. Last year, when we were talking about possibility of school choice, we decided what better time we're going to be rolling out the new CCGP S so we can start implementing the STEM initiative as the teachers were rolling out the standards. When we introduced this to our teachers, there were a lot of questions. However, they embraced it, they were excited, and they started the planning back last spring. So what we decided to do is we implemented our curriculum to make sure that we had our science lab in place. And we were thankful that we were able to put that in place. We also hired a part-time science teacher, Ms. Martha Russell from Peeps Elementary. She was a retired teacher who loves science and has been a blessing to our school. She's developed all kinds of science activities for the students and even does science rolling carts that the teachers can take to the classrooms with them if they need to. We've also developed a rotation schedule where children can every eighth day, children can go into an exploratory class that has a STEM theme behind it. And I'll show you a few pictures of this as we go through the presentation. Our first presentation is that we've had tools of trade. We have adventures with microscopes. We did have people from Agnescope College that donated some extra microscopes for our students to use. And they loved exploring with these. And the big thing that they really get a kick out of is going in and wearing goggles. They think that's really good. We also have had an opportunity to work with an engineer who's coming into school. And he's been helping children develop weather instruments. They just got through making windmills and the whole first grade came down. Parents came in, they made windmills, and the windmills actually worked. They were amazed and the kids were too. Here, they're doing planet adaptations. And they do a lot of observing, a lot of analyzing, they do a lot of experimenting. They have to go through that cycle of results to come back and see if it worked. If it didn't work, why didn't it work? And then start back over again. We were fortunate to have our EcoWonders and we have our outdoor garden. We also won the Lowe's Grant last year. And we were able to develop a big garden out back. And we had harvest this past fall. This is more of the Eco, or the adaptations. And that's our guest, our guest engineer who comes in and helps us with all kinds of projects. Here, the first graders were making sails and they had to use different types of materials to try out, to see which ones would sail. As they put them in front of the fans, they would slide across the tables. And if you could see the expressions on their faces, they didn't think they were going to move. But they did move, they had a lot of fun with it. They're doing a lot of work with the planets. And if you drive into Honey Creek, the driveway, you'll see a row of signs that go across the whole front of the school. And one of the classes was studying the planets. And they measured the distance of the planets and they scaled down the measurements. And you can see the different planets and all of their information on each one of the stakes. And they go all the way across the front of the school. We're hoping that they will stay up for the month of January. We have had budding archaeologists. We also have a teacher that has, that won a Snappy Shoals grant and got a geocaching device. And the kids are using geocaching and they go around the campus and they find, they were finding archaeology, archaeological digs. And they were also finding problems that they had to solve in order to go to the next place. We're trying to make sure that they have real-world applications by bringing in outside vendors. This is a gentleman that came in from UPS to demonstrate how to package and how you needed quality control and packaging. So from there, the kids did the egg drop. And we had the fire department come in and throw their packages off the roof for them. And each team had to go and get, retrieve their package after it was thrown. And then they had to check and see whose package was, who was working, which one was the best. We also have our engineering component that's in place. They were building miniature tree houses. We have the whole back end of the campus that has a lot of pine trees back there. And after one of the classes read the book Hatchet, all the kids went back and held their constructions hats and built huts, just like they did in the book Hatchet. So they're getting to really see what it's like to design and engineer projects. This was when our third grade classes were developing parthenons. And each class had to choose some type of an object to build a parthenon with. So we had one grade level building with food items, one building with paper, one building with wood. And we have a copy of all the different parthenons that they developed from this project. We also had aeronautical design and aeronautic engineers. The fifth graders really had a time with this because once they found out that they built those airplanes and they threw them, they might have done a little bit, or they might have gone straight and there was a problem. They'd have to go back to the drawing board, back to their team, try to figure out what's going on with the problem and redesign it. This was part of our Lowe's Grant. And the Lowe's Grant was a wonderful thing. We got six planting bins. And every single student in the school was involved in engineering and designing the bins, building the bins, filling them, planting the seeds, and growing the garden. And they did have to work as a team. So as you can see, we did have a wonderful garden. They planted radishes, lettuces, collard greens, which we harvested and shared with board members. At our harvest, they have cabbages yet to go. And they did also have broccoli that they just harvested. It was a great garden. You can see there was a harvest and they all, everybody in every single grade level got to wash the greens. And they were the cleanest collard greens. These are part of our enrichment classes. We continue with the gardening, and this is a cooking class that the kids go to. We have the cup stacking class and the green team, which is our environment team. The bug club, where we have one teacher who loves bugs. And the kids really get excited about this class. We have another cooking class. These are just some of our classes, the robotics team, the crafting team, the Play-Doh and Lego build, the science olympiad, and the virtual design. And STEM exploration is something that's ongoing and it's continuous. And this is just the beginning for Honey Creek. We have so much more to share with you, but you need to come and see it. Thank you very much.
Ms. Simons, I wanted to thank you for allowing parents to be involved. I was fortunate enough to work with the parthenon. And they had to dress in togas, y'all. They all dressed in togas to build it. But seeing, letting them choose everything and how they constructed it together and worked together. And you can quickly find out who leaders are.
Very quickly.
Yes, very quickly. It was great, I enjoyed it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Ms. Simons, thank you and to all of the Honey Creek staff for taking the lead with science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Do note, for the public's viewpoint, that all of our elementary schools have science labs. Certainly, Honey Creek is a bit ahead of some of our elementary schools with regards to becoming STEM certified. But I do want to say I appreciate the support of this board and also the support of the community through our SPOS funding that allowed us to be able to put science labs in every elementary school in Rockdale County Public Schools. I don't know of any other district that has science labs like ours in every elementary school. So thank you, board, and thank you, community.
Next item on the agenda is certificates of awards, Ms. Paul.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask our chairman and superintendent to join me up front for our recognitions. Okay, we are going to begin with the Davis Middle School Eagles Fast Pitch Softball Team. If you all will come on up front. And I know we have some students who have already left town for vacation. So Coach, if it's okay with you, I'm going to hand you everybody's certificate since we do have quite a few missing. Oh, you came bearing goodies. All right, don't go anywhere. You have to be front and center while I talk about it. You all know the drill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This year, Davis Middle School Eagles Fast Pitch Team surpassed expectations. They gave no thought to a second, a second, y'all, undefeated season. And they joked early on that if the curse held true, and I still don't know what this curse is, Coach, you're going to have to share that, that they would not win a championship this year. The team took shape quickly and they worked harder than ever through August and September. The number one reason for their success was the fantastic leadership from their eighth graders. They made the work fun. The 2012 Eagles finished with thirteen wins and no losses. And the eighth graders finished their middle school careers with twenty-seven wins and no losses. Not bad for a bunch of girls. Congratulations for the second year in a row to the New Rock League Champions. And if you will just wave or step forward when I call your name. Our team members, Addie Allegretti, Jahara Bugs, Breon Butler, Sidney Driver, Jasmine Green, Kennedy Lester, Caleb Phillips, Brinkley Thomas, Sidney Turner, Morgan Whiten, Tierra Wise, our manager, Kristen Martin, assistant coach, Kim Cammerer, and our head coach, Bart McLean. Congratulations. Parents, you're welcome to come up here and take a photo.
The curse, the curse.
The curse.
The first year Davis was open, we didn't win the championship. And the second year we won. And the third year we were open, we didn't win the championship. But the fourth year we won.
So it's every year, and you broke it. Good for you, though. Congratulations.
Oh, I'm sorry. You all do your photos out.
Somebody count for something.
It's going to be flashy.
I know, right?
And you have to hold it for me.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm going to make sure I get everybody.
All right, I'll count, one, two, three. Great, congratulations, good job.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Next, we will recognize our schools that were recently named reward schools by the Georgia Department of Education. The category is reserved for schools with the highest performance or the biggest academic gains by students in the last three years. First, we congratulate, and you can, principal, if you have anyone else with you you'd like to bring up front? And then when we get everybody up here, we'll do a group photo. First, we congratulate Davis Middle School, Honey Creek Elementary School, and Barnesdale Elementary School, all for making the highest performing list. And if you all will just stay up here a minute. To make the highest performing list, these schools are identified as the top five percent of Title I schools in Georgia and have the highest performance for the all-students group over three years. And we also congratulate on the reward school list, Pine Street Elementary School. Pine Street Elementary School made the high progress list. And to make the high progress list, Pine Street was identified in the top ten percent of Title I schools in Georgia and is having the highest progress in performance for the all-student group over three years. Congratulations. We're going to have to tighten up here. Let's have you two go up. And go up one more. And can you go up one? And you go slide on one. I'm going to do this. Can you rise here? This way, so you're right here, now we can see. Okay, have a look. All right, one, two, three. Congratulations and thank you for all your hard work. Lastly, we will recognize our high schools for their hard work and commitment to increasing academic rigor for all students through advanced placement. You may recall that last February, all Rockdale County High Schools and the Rockdale Career Academy were named 2012 AP Honor Schools for the second consecutive year. Both Heritage and Rockdale were recognized in the AP Access and Support category and the AP STEM Schools category. Salem and Rockdale Career Academy joined them in the category of AP STEM Schools. Rockdale County High School was also named in the third category, AP STEM Achievement. And because of the work being done with advanced placement, last month, the college board recognized Rockdale County Public Schools on its third annual AP District Honor Roll for school systems across the nation. Only seven districts in Georgia and five hundred and thirty-nine across the United States and Canada achieved this honor. The college board recognizes districts that simultaneously increase access to advanced placement coursework while increasing the percentage of students earning scores of three or higher on AP exams. A press release from the college board stated that achieving both of these goals is the ideal scenario for a district's AP program because it indicates that the district is successfully identifying motivated, academically-prepared students who are likely to benefit most from rigorous AP coursework. We congratulate and appreciate all of you, along with your teachers and students, for this great accomplishment. Heritage High School. Rockdale County High School. Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. Rockdale Career Academy. And Salem High School. You're, you're good. Because Rich has said, oh, you're good. You good? One, two, three. Wait, one more. One, two, three. Thank you, and congratulations. That concludes my recognition.
If y'all would like to leave, if you can, we're not going to take a recess tonight. This house gives and this house won't set a record on the week. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Merry Christmas.
Three in a row.
Oh.
Three in a row.
Oh, please. Don't take pressure. Please don't take pressure.
Okay, I have no cause for visitors' comments at this time. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's cabinet report. Ms. Paul. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent's cabinet's updates will consist of Office of Financial Services, Mr. Lee Davis. And I'll conclude with remarks. Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Chairman Barstow, Superintendent Alton, members of the board. Office of Financial Services has two reports for you tonight. First one is our November final general fund financial report. I did present the preliminary, I'm sorry, last week. And not a lot of change. The only thing, Cindy, if you'll scroll down to the balance sheet, please, ma'am, is the reduction in the liabilities and the course of money reduction in cash. I did mention the tax anticipation note or the TAN I mentioned last week. We did pay that off the first week in January. So you'll see that going in the next month's financial report. But any questions on the final financial report? Again, the revenue expense is basically out there. What was presented? Jason, if you can, write up in the SPOS. We have the SPOS. If you'll scroll, we have just a little bit, right there. Trying to get the light through. Thank you, Cindy. We are down on SPOS two to three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-six. We should be finishing that up pretty soon. And then we'll have all those projects completed that were in SPOS two. And you see the revenue and expense, the list of all the projects there. If you'll scroll down, please, Cindy. You can see the collections, obviously, that's been finished for some time. If you'll keep scrolling, we'll get to SPOS three. Okay, right there. We're sending it up, hit the head, the red light. SPOS three, we do have thirty million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand left in it. We do anticipate being able to do all the projects that are in SPOS three. If you add SPOS two and three fund balances together, we do have thirty-one million, two hundred and six thousand. Obviously, as you are very well aware and have heard me said before, or say before, the SPOS going to be used for construction and capital expenditures and retirement of debt. And if you scroll down just a little further, Cindy. And to the left, there, thank you. You see right in the middle, right in there, we have received sixty-three million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which is seventy-four percent of the projection, seventy-four point zero three. Due to lower costs and additional state construction dollars, we do perceive that we'll be able to do all the projects in SPOS three. Are there any questions? Want to refer? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Chairman, if you will, I realize that this is a festive time of year. However, the current situation, the circumstances with regards to Sandy Hook, as you mentioned, and the tragedy in Connecticut, certainly prompts me to communicate our stance as a school system and what we have done. But our overall philosophy, number one, we certainly understand that our primary purpose as an educational system is to teach kids and to help children learn. But quite frankly, our number one priority that our parents expect and our families expect is when they drop their children off, that their children are safe. And that their children return home safe. And that is what we take very seriously. We don't take that for granted. We certainly understand. We certainly understand that there are tragedies that occur that can be unforeseen, but we do everything in our power to try to be proactive and make sure that we have security measures in place that all of our children and all of our adults and all of our families are safe when they step on our school grounds. Let me communicate, and I think I have in written fashion to the board, but there are a few things that have gone on since then, but I certainly want to communicate to the public. Some of the things that we did from a security standpoint in lieu of, or due to the events that happened in Connecticut. As I mentioned to you before, that entire weekend, Friday afternoon, that entire weekend, I was in collaboration with Sheriff Wigginton, Chief Wilson, making sure that we had additional patrol officers at our rivalry games, but also we wanted to make sure that we put those units at our elementary schools. Our elementary schools don't normally have law enforcement presence there, although each of our elementary schools has an SRO who is assigned for responsibility if need be. They are not housed at our elementary schools at this point in time. But we did have an increased presence. We had a lot of comments as cabinet was out and about those two days from parents, particularly elementary parents, how relieved and appreciative they were that we had that increased presence at our elementary schools. In addition, as I mentioned, our principals reviewed, as they normally do, our safety protocols, making sure that they conduct their safety drills as required. I mentioned cabinet members, those two days, we were out and about during arrival and dismissal, making sure that we were there to support our principals and any parents if need be. Student support from Dr. Brundage's office, certainly when you talk about tragedies such as this and young children, there are a lot of questions that cannot easily be answered. And so that type of resource, emotional support for not only children, but for adults as well, was necessary as we mobilized our mental health workers and our social workers to be on call if need be. Also, upcoming in January, as required, all of our schools will conduct their annual security threat assessment in which we'll have teams that walk through each school to identify where some possible threats are, where some things that we could have possibly improved, and what are resources that they may need at their particular school to enhance safety within their particular building. I'll have Dr. Brundage ensure that each of these threat assessments are conducted. Once they are conducted, he'll report back to me as superintendent as to any findings that may occur. Also, Mr. Bootenseek is looking at right now securing prices to retrofit entrance doors for all of our schools, the main entrance doors, to have buzz capability. I don't know how else to describe that, but buzzing capability. In other words, you can't just freely walk into our schools, quite frankly, like many of our schools allow you to do right now. We need to look at how we allow visitors into our schools and make sure we have some sort, I believe, of controlled access. So we're looking at the financial implications of that, and I'll bring something once that study is completed to the board for your review. Lastly, Dr. Brundage, Mr. Baker, Mr. Marco, and myself have a meeting with the new sheriff, Sheriff Levitt, and his staff to review our roles and responsibilities for our current SROs that we currently have and see how we may can redefine how they service our schools, both secondary and elementary, but also see if there's a type of training and support system they may provide our staffs as well with regards to emergency response. So those are the things that we have done in response. And again, I don't mean to bring this board meeting down. I realize it is a festive time, but this is a serious matter and one that we make a top priority here in our school district and one that we take very seriously. So I wanted to make sure the board knew what we have done, but what we are projected to do as well. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my remarks.
I would like to make a comment also. I had occasion to visit one of our elementary schools this week shortly after the tragedy in Newtown, and they had not only a resource officer, a sheriff's deputy, there at the front door, but they also had set up with two employees that checked everybody that came in the door. And then at one of our middle schools, one of the parents called me and said what a comfort it was to see not only the resource officer, who is there every day at our middle schools anyway, but also the principal and the AP's assistant principals moved their desks out into the rooms, out into the hallways, to give the children and, as Mr. Autry said, the staff that a more secure feeling during this most unsettling time. So please tell your cabinet and your administrators how thankful we, as a board are, that they took those steps and everything went smoothly. The school I was at went very, very well. And I was there as a grandparent, not as a school board member.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes from November summer? I have a motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Matt Brayer. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, four, and none opposed. We have no committee reports. We have no old business. We have new business consent agenda items one through seven. All of these items were discussed thoroughly last week. Do I hear a motion for the consent agenda items?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Yance, second by Ms. Young to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, four, and none opposed. Next item is new business discussion. First item is board priorities and goals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent recommends that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt board priorities and goals for SY 2012, 13, as presented. These are the goals that were presented at our work session. I have amended the goals to reflect the comments that the board provided. I would ask you to review those and provide any feedback. If not, Mr. Chairman, I would ask the board, the board about these goals as presented. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. The only thing on professional development, I personally feel that it needed to stay underneath the stewardship of district resources to best support student successes because it's talking about the administration underneath that goal, whereas the first goal is more designed to be student, per se. The rest of it's fine.
The reason I had brought that up for that suggested change, it just seems like professional development goes hand in hand with student achievement. How can that adult that's training that child be effective if they don't have the professional development to take the child to the next level? So that was the reasoning for asking for that to be up there.
And let me give you some context as I've tried to work through it. Really, you're exactly right. I think professional development and student achievement, professional development and a lot of teacher behaviors and staff behaviors go hand in hand. But goal two specifically talked about resources, and teachers and staff are human resources, and that's why we've got highly qualified. We want our teachers and staff to be highly qualified. We talked about recruitment and retention of staff. So that's why originally, Katrina, I had professional development there. But I can see where you can make a nexus between if you don't have effective professional development, you're not going to get, you know, increased student achievement. So for me, as I've told some of you, I can go either way with it. Irregardless, it's going to make sure that we have great professional development and coherent professional development either way. That's going to be a valid factor. So I will do as the board wishes. So you guys can, any other?
Well, I saw it as a goal two as well. However, it's on the board priorities.
On the document.
Right, it's there, so I'm fine with it being the way it's been presented.
Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion to adopt the board goals and priorities?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Yance, second by Ms. Hoskins to adopt the goals and priorities. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, four, and none opposed. Next item is school improvement. Elevate K-12 contracts, Ms. Paul. No, I'm sorry, I went down. No, that's right. That's right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent recommends that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contracts with Elevate K-12 to provide instructional services to ninth and 10th grade math students pending the approval of General Counsel. We discussed this at our work session, board, that we certainly are not unfamiliar to the struggles of our ninth and 10th grade math students. This is a tutorial safety net type program that will target 75 students per high school, a total of 225 students. Much of the funding has come from our Title 1003B focus school programs in which all of our high schools participate in. The remainder will be existing safety net funds in the amount of $45,000. I do believe there was a request for additional information. I believe Mr. Baker provided that additional information. Ms. Hoskins, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to adopt the contract?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Young.
Thank you.
Second by Ms. Smith to adopt the contract. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, four, and none opposed. Next item, school improvement. Rights to the top innovation project contract. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent recommends that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract by and between the Governor's Office of Student Achievement and Rockdale County Public Schools in the total contract amount of $676,849 for the purpose of creating a magnet school at Memorial Middle School. Again, you can see the rationale. We've talked and had presentations on the creation of the Academy for Environmental Science, Environmental Studies at Memorial. I do want to remind the board that this is revenue. This is incoming funds. There are no additional expenditures from the general fund in this contract. Any other questions and discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the contract?
Yes. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. McKinnon, second by Ms. Young to approve the rights to the contract. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, four, and none opposed. There's no more discussion added to the agenda. We have no executive session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hoskins to adjourn. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, four, and none opposed. I do think that's a record. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas.